Good morning, one and all. The time is 8:38. Time to begin our council meeting. Thank you all for being here. We'll begin with our roll call. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Baines. Brandau. Brettafeld.
Here.
Capriolio.
I am here.
Chavez.
Here.
Soria. President Olivia.
Here. Well now, please stand for the invocation by Reverend Dr. Samuel Morgan of Westside Church of God, followed by pledge allegiance to the flag.
Gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to see yet another day. We come before you humbly with our heads bowed low and our hands raised high in submission to you. We thank you, dear God, for waking us up this morning because without you we would not have seen another day. But it was only by your grace and by your mercy that allowed us to wake up this morning. Now, Lord, I thank you for this city council and their willingness to put you first before they conduct their business for this day. Bless them, oh God, as they serve this city, meet every need in their lives, and I speak health to their bodies and blessings to them. Look down upon them and give them wisdom and insight, bind their hearts together, and heal any brokenness between them that would hinder them or stop them from accomplishing the goals and tasks put before them today. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for this great city. Bless our mayor, bless all our city leaders. Keep our police safe, Lord, and keep our citizens safe. We trust and know, Lord, that we can only truly depend on you. With the crisis and controversies that occur and that are going on throughout our nation, we know, Lord, that Fresno can be safe because of you. Now keep us this day, bless all that meet here, in the precious name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Let everyone say, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
Thank you, Pastor. Move now to approval of the agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to today's agenda?
The only change I have is that one of the speakers for the 10/20 scheduled communication may not make it today. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any councilmembers who wish to make any changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Thank you for that motion. I wish to remove item 1Q from the agenda today, please.
Can I ask why that's being removed?
I wish to remove item 1Q because I believe it's, as we move forward in the public policy debate in terms of the Prop 64 and marijuana, cannabis in our community, I think that it would be more prudent to take more time before voting to, on an outright ban of cultivation. So I think that if we've got, we've got a number of months, we have more time this year, I think it would be prudent to wait.
You talking about looking into the plants, the number of plants that you want to investigate? I mean, we talked about that two weeks ago, three weeks ago. I mean, just, I'm curious, obviously, what it is you're specifically wanting to do with this issue, because we've looked at it, obviously, over and over and over.
Yeah, that's true. I agree with you that this body has debated it a number of times, but I think that the debate that we've had has been inadequate in terms of coming up with a creative public policy that could benefit not just this organization but neighborhoods in Fresno as well. So I don't, I don't think it's prudent at this time to, to approve this item.
Do you have a timeline when you would like to discuss it, or it's just kind of nebulous?
Well, City Attorney, we, we need to take it up by the end of the year, correct? Is that?
No. This one's a little bit different than the dispensary issue. With the cultivation issue, right now, the city has on the books a complete ban on cultivation. Under Prop 64, we can regulate cultivation, but we have to allow for at least six grown indoors. So right now, our ordinance is inconsistent with state law, and state law would supersede city code. So right now, you can grow six indoors, whether or not we change the law, but the law that is being proposed here, the ordinance, would add regulations to the growing six indoors also.
And would also prohibit the cultivation for commercial purposes within city limits?
Correct.
Okay. That's, that's really the sticking point that I have. A number of plants as well, but I think that as we move forward in the discussion of possible medicinal marijuana, I think it's possible that this organization is going to want to... I think that it may come forward during the ensuing months to come. I think that it may come forward that it's a public benefit for this organization to regulate the cultivation, the transport, and the sale. I think that there are some connections to black market. Basically, what I'm saying is that I have learned in my research that municipalities all around the state of California and other places see the benefit in regulating and controlling not just a medicinal storefront, but also the cultivation of the cannabis, so that storefronts don't have to turn to the black market to provide product. So I think that it's...
But this is, this is personal use, right? Personal grow.
Well, it's cultivation, it's all cultivation, so six plants or whatever number of plants for individuals at home. But what, what this does, what item 1Q does, is it prohibits all cultivation beyond those six plants.
Correct.
So if, if, correct. And that's, that's kind of the, that is the sticking point for me, so.
Right. So you don't want that restriction on the six plants. And you've been clear about that. You're not sure what number, because we talked about that three weeks ago.
Right.
But you don't want the restriction on the six plants.
Right.
And maybe that's where the council is, they don't want the restriction. Is it accurate, City Attorney, that if we don't put some restriction by the end of the year, that basically people can grow as many plants as they want?
No. And, and I would caution that under the Brown Act, this is not the time for a substantive discussion on the issue. This is simply whether or not it stays on the agenda. But no, the, the end of the year thing applies to dispensaries, not cultivation.
Okay, but if there's no restriction put in at all on cultivation?
Right now, the city completely prohibits cultivation, indoors and outdoors, but state law says that you can still grow six indoors.
Or more.
Well, without any regulation, you could grow as many as you wanted to.
That's what I'm saying.
But we can't restrict the first six. We have to allow for six.
Right. But if we, if the city of Fresno does not put any restriction, like other municipalities have on six, by state law, people will be allowed to grow six or more. Is that correct?
If we had no city ordinance at all addressing cultivation, then yes, under state law, you could grow more.
Correct. Okay. So that, that's in fact what we're saying. Okay, so you're, so I guess the issue is whether you're going to pull the item. It's not an issue, I guess, we can discuss unless we're just, we're actually addressing the item.
Right. Right now, the issue is whether it stays on the agenda.
Yeah, it would have to be a motion to keep it on the agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to keep it on the agenda and to discuss, as scheduled for the, I think, third or fourth time.
Right. Under the council rules, at agenda approval, any one council member can say something is off the agenda. To keep it on the agenda, it would require a motion, second, and a majority vote to keep it on the agenda.
Okay, so I'm making a motion to keep it on the agenda for discussion. And, action.
We have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. If no other council member wishes to comment, I'd like to vote electronically, please.
So a yes vote is to keep it on the agenda.
Motion fails. Four no, three yes. Thank you, council. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay. We have a motion by Member Capriolio to approve the agenda. Is there a second? Okay, and we have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition? Okay, seeing none. Member Brettafeld.
Yeah, just, I don't know if we've gotten, I know you pulled this item. Are we ready to address consent or no?
No, as soon as we do, we'll do the ceremonials first, and then we'll do the thing. And also, I wished, oh yeah, consent calendar. Okay. So ceremonial presentation, on a lighter note, let's have Mayor, Mayor Brand's office and the city council proclaiming of Andrea Walls Day. Hey.
This is Mayor Lee Brand. I'm sorry I couldn't be in person to honor Andy Wells today, but I wanted to share a couple thoughts about Andy, who will always be fondly remembered by everyone at City Hall, whose lives she touched. Andy brought a positive energy to every interaction and a zest for life that made her stand out. Whether she was dealing with utility customers or serving her fellow employees, Andy met every challenge with kindness and grace. We're going to miss her. I'm honored to join the Fresno City Council in proclaiming today Andrea Walls Day in the city of Fresno and presenting her family with a special proclamation.
Thank you for coming. I'm Annie Reenie. I am from the mayor's office. I did have the pleasure of knowing Andy for over 10 years, working with her side by side in FCA, many issues. Whether we were together on issues or opposed on issues, Andy and I always left the room friends, and that's, that speaks volumes for Andy. But I don't want today to go by without mentioning other coworkers and friends that have passed this year. And one of them, Peggy Heineman, Call Center, 10 years; Andy Vanderford, Public Works, 25 years; Connie Das Pagnini, PD and Darm for 15 years; and Martin Ortiz. So we pay respects to all of them. I want to thank Andy's friends who came forward to help me write the proclamation, or office write the proclamation. They had so many good stories. I mean, there was a story that happened in Vegas, and guess what? The story stays in Vegas. I am going to concur, what happens in Vegas stays in Vegas. But Andy was a hoot, from what I hear, as a personal friend. Also, there was a statement that I just can't go without saying. Judy, one of her good friends, says, "I bet she's organizing everyone in heaven." And she probably is. Unfortunately, our proclamation isn't 10 pages long, and it could go that long, speaking about Andy. I just want to say some things about her that resonated with me when talking to her friends. She was approachable, she was trustworthy, she was a good listener, she was a friend and a coworker to many, and she was best friends with a few that I had no idea. We work here together, and we don't realize the relationships everyone makes with each other. And I just want that to be on the record, that Andy had best friends here. Unfortunately, cancer does not discriminate. As a survivor of cancer myself, I understand the battle Andy went through. I understand the endurance she had to run and the race she was running. I understand that the days that she wanted to cry, she smiled for her family. That takes a lot of courage, and the battle takes a lot of courage. And so I just want to say that there is a scripture that sticks out to me, Romans 8:28. And we know that for those who love God, all things work together for the good. Andy is the winner, she has the victory, she's in peace, along with our other coworkers that we've lost this year. So I just want to thank you for coming, and I'm going to let Clint read the proclamation. And I'd like Judy and Connie and the family of Andy to come up, because we have proclamations for both of you. And come on up.
Thank you. This is a proclamation from the city of Fresno. Whereas Andrea, Andy Walls, spent 22 years working for the city of Fresno as a customer service clerk in utilities, billing and collection, and as a tax permit inspector in business tax. And whereas Andy was also very active in the Fresno City Employees Association and served for many years as an FCEA executive board member and director, and as their representative on the city's labor management task force. And whereas Andy was the founding member of the Fresno chapter of Toastmasters, and for many years served as sergeant-at-arms. And whereas Andy's life left a lasting memory on many with whom she worked in the city family. And whereas Andy's coworkers remember her as someone who is personally charitable and did kind things for many people. She was fun and had a lot of energy, and for years, she decorated the ladies restroom, dressed up for Halloween, and the founder of the Stairwell Singers, who would sing harmony in the stairwell for birthdays and retirements. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Brand, and the Fresno City Council do hereby honor and celebrate the life of Andrea Walls for her joy of life, commitment to service, and generosity of spirit. And be it further resolved that we, Mayor Lee Brand, and Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim August 24 to be Andrea Walls Day in the city of Fresno.
Soria.
So good morning, everyone. It is a great delight to be here with all of you to celebrate Women's Equality Day. So I want to invite both Kathy Brass and Janet Miller up front to receive this proclamation. But very proud that today, the Fresno City Council, along with our mayor, celebrate Women's Equality Day, which is on August 26. So this Saturday, we will be celebrating 90, the 97th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment. For those of us that don't know what the 19th Amendment, granted, it did grant women the right to vote. And so we wanted to make sure that we highlight this very important day, because while we do have the right to vote, there's still a number of issues where women face inequity here today. And so we recognize that this fight, fight is not over. So while we celebrate the passage of the 19th Amendment and the anniversary, we also want to make sure that we highlight this day, so that folks out there recognize the importance of the event, but also the needs that continue to exist, and what these fine ladies do with their organization, the National Women Political Caucus. But again, the 19th Amendment marks a turning point in the history of equal treatment of women and women, women's rights. We like to recognize our National Women's Political Caucus. I've worked along with these women in educating on various issues, and also supporting women in our community. It's a nonpartisan organization, but supporting women as they seek elected office. We know that the diversity of voices in the various boards makes for best public policy, and so there is a need for women to be represented in different elected boards. As you guys see, I am the only woman out of seven, and not to beg on my council members, but I think that it's important for us to have that voice at the, at every level of government, and I hope to see more women in the future get involved. But again, I just want to thank you ladies for being here. If you guys want to share just some of the work that you guys are doing, and if there are any events coming up in celebration of Women's Equality Day.
Ms. Morello, I'd like to thank you very much for honoring us, and your words about the fact that there's still much that needs to be done in terms of women's equality. We're always working towards that. The National Women's Political Caucus has been in existence since 1971. In Fresno, we've been around for 42 years. We have a very strong group. We are a multi-partisan organization, supporting progressive women at all levels of government. We do have a function this evening, and we are celebrating our Women's Equality Day event this evening at Torino's. And I happen to notice, she didn't know that I was going to say this, but one of our honorees, our fire chief, Carrie Donnis, is in the room. So we're looking forward to a great evening, and we will continue the work to make sure that we have more women in elected positions.
I can just reiterate what Kathy said. I'm grateful to be a member of this nonpartisan group that works so hard, and it does train, help train, and support women to run for elected office. So I'm taking that to heart, and I'm running for Fresno County Board of Ed. Thank you.
So now if the clerk could read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas every August, we recognize Women's Equality Day in efforts to bring attention to the issue of gender, gender equality, and its effect on individuals, families, and communities, and to highlight the need for gender equality. And whereas, although it has been nearly a century since the ratification of the 19th Amendment, a lot more work needs to be done to reach the goal of true gender equality. And whereas, the city of Fresno, as of 2017, houses approximately 251,541 women, 30,000 of these women being single mothers and the main household provider. And whereas Fresno's National Women Political Caucus is a leading organization that works tirelessly throughout the Central Valley to ensure an increase in women's throughout the political process. And whereas Fresno's National Women Political Caucus is a catalyst for change, as it offers training to women and leaders of the future. And whereas the pursuit of equality for women is a challenge that must be overcome in order to secure the prosperity of our community, this city, and the nation. And whereas the women of the United States have designated August 26 the anniversary date of the certification of the 19th Amendment, which illuminated a 72-year nonviolent campaign to extend the right to vote to women, as a symbol of continued fight for equal rights. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Fresno, mayor, and city council does hereby proclaim August 26, 2017, as Women's Equality Day in the city of Fresno.
Just wanted to add that congratulations to our chief, Carrie Donnis, who will be recognized tonight, along with Fresno City College President Carol Goldsmith, and also our First Lady Mary Castro from Fresno State.
Thank you, Vice President Soria. And now we move to the approval of minutes from August 17, 2017. Do any councilmembers have any changes to those minutes? The screen is clear. The chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Member Capriolio, and a second by Member Brandau. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition? Item carries unanimously. It's time now for councilmember reports and comments. Member Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. I would ask that we adjourn today's meeting in loving memory of two of my, actually, very close friends. Mark Lawson, he was born in Fresno, graduated from Fresno High School. He received the Eagle Scout Award, Fresno State graduate, and he spent 29 years in the mortgage industry. And in his obituary, the quote is, "He was always thoughtful, generous, and valuing friendship above all else." And that's absolutely true, and we will miss him. Second, longtime educator, author, and civil rights activist, Maddie Douglas Burck Myers. She recently passed away at the age of 92. And interesting, she was such an interesting woman. She, we spent time talking, and especially during my campaigning and all, way back. Anyway, a couple of facts about her that I think are very important. From the 50s and 60s turbulent times, she actually ran for the office of mayor. She was the first woman under the then-new city charter in Fresno. So in Fresno's history, she was the first who sought the office of mayor. There's so many things we could talk about, but she spent 30-plus years as an educator in the Kermit Unified School District and the Fresno Unified School District. And she touched so many lives in that career, and she will be sorely missed. She was just a great, great woman. So if we could adjourn in loving memory of those two people, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll adjourn in memory of Mark Lawson and Maddie Douglas Burck Myers. Thank you, Member Capriolio. The screen is clear. We now move to the consent calendar. Do any councilmembers wish to remove any items from the consent calendar today? Member Brettafeld? Thank you, Member Brettafeld. Anyone else? Okay, the screen is clear. Let's go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the city council on any item contained in the consent calendar? If so, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment and return to the council dais. The screen is clear. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar. We have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, consent calendar passes unanimously. Move now to contested consent calendar. Member Brettafeld removed item 1D as in dog, and this is Department of Transportation.
Yeah. Question for Greg.
Uh-oh.
Oh, Bruce. Got Bruce, all right. Excellent.
Good morning, council.
Hi, Bruce.
Just a quick thing. So there's a cost savings of $104,000 because we reduced the outreach part of this? Yes, what we're doing is that we're going to use our, some of our internal staff, as well as partner with three nonprofits who have relationships and databases, and have worked with the constituency that is generally uses public transportation, or has a lot of vested interest in how public transportation services are provided. Okay, and I think that's great. We talk a lot about the outreach part, and you guys have done that, and so I want to commend you and the department. I saw something in the staff report that said there's been a decrease in ridership nationwide. Have we seen that also here locally? Yes. I mean, how dramatic has the? The ridership last year has been a loss of 10%. And over the last 10 years, we have seen, and I found this out a couple weeks ago, a 46% decline in ridership. Okay. So obviously, our system is not taking people where they want to get to, or how, or the convenience of the system has resulted in, or the lack thereof is creating an impact, like that article pointed out, where people are looking for other alternatives. So it's imperative that we need to find out what we need to do, and I think our proposed plan addresses a lot of those issues, but there are other changes that we need to consider as a result of land use decisions and places that have been developed outside our service that we need to address. So whether it's a shopping center that is, is not anywhere near, a bus system, city-owned park, or veterans' home, those are some of the obvious impacts of land use decisions when they're not fully vetted out, that we're going to have to also look at as part of this process. And part of this is going to be addressed, you're feeling, through the BRT? Well, BRT is just one component, but the proposal that was presented to council and what this will vet out are a number of significant changes to the existing system. BRT is not going to be one of those changes, but there are, there are other service improvements or changes that were recommended that potentially could have an impact on disadvantaged communities, because there may be an area of town that now has service, but right at the doorstep, that may not as a result of those changes. So that is why we need to go through the Title VI process required by the FTA. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, and a second by Member Baines. And Member Soria, you're punched up.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to make some brief remarks. I know my office, and I've been in communication with you guys about some of the issues that exist west of the 99, and as it relates to lack of access to transportation. I want to make sure that I, I'm in the loop as you guys are doing the outreach, would like to be helpful in that sense, because I know that my district has heard over and over about the issue of connectivity... about the issue of connectivity and getting safe transportation to the park for our young kids, our families, our seniors. I'm getting that a lot more, and so I'm just looking forward to being able to work with you. I also just want to commend, I know that, commend the work that you guys have been doing to be creative in increasing ridership, working in partnership with Fresno State, Fresno City College, and trying to, you know, through a social media campaign, encourage more people to ride the bus. And so I'm supportive of those efforts and looking forward to help and to also see what the community says about, you know, the bus routes.
And I won't get into detail, but council, you should anticipate within the next thirty to forty-five days, an announcement related to a couple of initiatives that we hope will help trigger an increase in ridership. So we will be rolling those out within the next thirty to forty-five days.
All right, thank you. And Member Brandow?
All right. I really have nothing to add, except that I really appreciate the cost savings since the last time we looked at this. So how much did we save by you guys coming back and doing part of the work?
It was a little over $100,000.
Well, so Bruce, that's fantastic. And so we've talked a lot about consulting items and different, but to save a hundred grand is fantastic, so I really appreciate your efforts.
Member Bretafeld?
Yeah, and I want to highlight that too, because I mentioned it, but it's a big deal. I mean, we've talked a lot about outreach. We've shut down some contracts because they were outreach. We asked you to, you know, see if there's some way staff can do more of the outreach, so we saved the taxpayers $104,000. You did that. That's quite a significant savings. I know people minimize, while it's not general fund money, but it's taxpayer money, regardless of whether it's from the general fund or an enterprise fund. It's money, and it's taxpayer money, and it's a great thing, and I commend you, Mr. Barfield, and everybody else in the department.
Thank you.
Maybe we can use that money to go after some fair evaders. Okay, well, the screen is clear. We have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition to this item? Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Redd. Okay, Member Bretafeld, you also removed item 1R?
Yes.
The floor is yours.
Yeah, this is the code relating to unlawful camping. A number of comments. I wasn't able to be here last week when this was introduced. I want to commend my colleague, Councilmember Brandow, for bringing this forward, and the members who supported this. I know there's a criticism that in some way, as they use the phrase, it's criminalizing the homeless. I don't feel that way at all. In fact, I think it's a significant way of reaching out to people who need the services. The fact is, when a police officer approaches people who are violating this ordinance, their interest is not arresting people. Their interest is in getting people through the services that they need. And in fact, it states right in the ordinance that the individual can be taken to a facility providing social services related to mental health, housing, and substance abuse treatment. I don't think it could be any more clear. And often I see that people say that, well, there aren't services available. Well, I don't know. I have a list of many of them: Catholic Charities, Central Valley Community Foundation, Community Food Bank, First Steps Home, the multi-agency access program called MAP, or MAPPOINT, the Fresno Rescue Mission, Lighthouse, Pavarello House, Marjorie Mason Center, Rescue for the Children, Salvation Army. There's plenty of services there. Pavarello House is serving 1,600 meals a day. The Rescue Mission has empty beds. And we want to assist these people and help these people, and this is another tool in the toolbox to help people. It isn't to arrest people. So I think it's a very important tool that we have. It isn't criminalizing anything. It truly is helping people who need to be helped, and so I think this is a great thing, and I'm happy to support it today. And again, I commend you, Councilmember Brandow, for bringing it forward. To that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Member Baines?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. And I, like Member Bretafeld, wasn't able to be here last week, but I wanted to weigh in a little bit. I know there was a vigorous debate, as I understand it, rightfully so. It's an important issue in our community. And so what I'd like to, what I'd like to ask Councilmember Brandow, and while I'm not 100% sure that I completely agree that this doesn't criminalize the homeless based off of the interpretation that the federal government can give, so I think us here may view it one way, which is fair, but we also need to make sure we're viewing it through the lens of those that send resources down to our community to make sure that we can actually provide services to the homeless. What I'd like to ask is that, if I understand it correctly, city attorney, this ordinance wouldn't come into effect for 30 days after adoption today?
That's correct.
What I'd like to ask is during that time, and possibly a little bit longer, that you, Councilmember Brandow, and I'm happy to join this effort with you, work with some of our friends that serve the homeless day in and day out, to ensure that the way that this ordinance has been drafted doesn't conflict with any federal resources or state resources that they may have coming to them. It's my understanding that they, in concept, there's a lot of wide-ranging support for the idea of this in a larger, in a larger framework. And I think they'd like to be at the table with you to help hopefully move it in a direction to where we're not hurting folks. I don't think that your intent is to hurt anybody in this community, and I think that you know, we've had conversations privately. I think you know that this community needs a tremendous amount of help, and I don't think you want to do anything that would remove that from them. So I would just respectfully ask, I'm going to be supportive of the item today, and during that time, I'd like to work with you and them to hopefully just ensure, and maybe our legal team too, to just ensure that certain things wouldn't be in jeopardy, because I don't think that that's your intent. So those are my comments, and I don't want to relitigate the issue from last week. I understand it already passed with a wide-ranging support from this body, and I just wanted to offer those few comments.
So Councilman Baines, you're talking about within the 30 days to have a discussion that might lead to delaying it an additional amount of time if necessary?
Yeah, I think if we're open to that, I think that there are a lot of people that are interested in trying to get there. And, you know, who knows if it takes longer than 30 days or less than 30 days? I would have put maybe a 90-day window on it, but I'm happy to, because we have a built-in 30-day window, just by the effect of our procedures, it gives us time to start, to work with them, and who knows, it could be done in 30 days or not, but...
And then, and so, A, for starters, inside that 30 days, I'll be happy to really talk with you and anybody that we bring into the room that needs to express that, because you never know, maybe there's a legitimate reason. But are you mostly, so is this kind of related to the HUD-related financing of housing, or is it a different...
Not exactly, not exactly.
Because you mentioned the federal government money, so that's what I...
Yeah, there are some agencies that get money from the federal government. They're kind of sitting out there right now.
Yeah.
And that specifically to serve the homeless population, they're worried, and it's, I don't want to dismiss their worry. Their worry is that if this ordinance passed, and like it is, with the language that it is now, if not well-understood by us and them, potentially could jeopardize their funding. So there may be tweaks that we can do with the city attorney's office, or at least receive input from them as to how we can move this forward, but at the same time, protect their funding. I think that's the nuance we, the nuance we want to do, because they get money specifically to serve the homeless population.
Yeah, and so I would say that, again, totally welcome the conversation, and mostly, well, not mostly, but the fact that you're asking me means a lot. So I will sit down and do that. I wanted to say that we did vet some of the theories about jeopardizing HUD money, so we did some of our homework in that regard as well. We actually had those conversations. I wouldn't say they were big, robust conversations, but we've heard and we've talked about that a little bit, so, and we vetted it a little bit, and so, but I'm definitely willing to look at it further. The only thing that I would say is that on the opposite side, we've got groups like the Fresno Chamber of Commerce, when I presented the material, the ordinance to them, they asked for an emergency implementation of the ordinance. They didn't even want to wait the 30 days. So there's pressure, but on both sides, definitely, I told them, we had to wait at least the 30 days. I need the chief of police to kind of get the rollout proper with his troops and so forth, and so, so I will definitely have those conversations with you. Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah. Member Soria?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to add a couple things, and, you know, I will commend my colleagues for trying to get to a place where, you know, to get consensus amongst this council on this issue that impacts the entire city. But in light of the comments that are made by my colleague, Oliver Baines, regarding just some of the issues that we have in front of us, the fact that we could be jeopardizing funding, but the whole point of this ordinance is to try to get people to get services, that just doesn't make logical sense to me, to be honest. Because in terms of trying to implement something right now, when we're talking about an ordinance that could potentially do that, but supposedly the end goal is to get people to get services, to me, in terms of logical reasoning, it does not make sense. I think that we need to pause for, if it's for a few weeks or 30 days, to really come back and sit down with our providers, who are the ones that are eventually going to provide the services to these people. If we're truly, honestly wanting these people to get services, we need to have that discussion. We can't just ram something through so that, you know, for the sake of saying, oh, we're going to implement it in 30 days because the Chamber of Commerce is, you know, saying that this is such an important issue. Well, if it's such an important issue, why don't we all come and sit down and have those conversations, so we're not jeopardizing the funding that eventually will help these people get services? Plus, we already talked about this. Our chief and our administration is committed to having these crisis intervention teams starting September 1st. Why aren't we waiting to see the rollout of it and how that helps with this issue? There's already honest efforts to try to address this issue. All we're going to do is we're going to continue to shuffle people around, we're going to go and potentially, you know, jeopardize people, put them in jail. I don't know how effective that's going to be, and so I really don't see how effective this ordinance is going to be, but just buzzwords to say that we're doing something to address the homeless issue that has been a problem for a lot of years. And so I think that we need to really put pause and have a broader conversation with folks that are doing the real work on the ground. I think that it merits that, and they do an outstanding job already with the limited resources. They told us that even if we pass this, you know, today, if people are put out to, or giving them to go and get services, they don't have enough resources to service them. So just, to me, it just doesn't make sense. So I'm going to stick with, you know, my no vote, because I think that if we're trying to be real policymakers and address the issue, we need to really have an honest conversation and listen to what the providers are saying and what the community is saying. I'm sympathetic with my business owners that I've heard about. I am confident that with the new crisis intervention teams, that we're going to see some positive changes. I know that our existing homeless task force, they try to do as much as they can with the limited resources, and so I think that it merits a little bit more time.
I'd like to respond.
Yeah, go ahead, Member Brandow. It's your item, but then we have Member Bretafeld, and Member Baines punched up.
So Councilmember Soria, gosh, I don't know how to say this, because we had four hours of conversation last week, and I tried to repeat it, and so I'm going to do it one more time. The whole point of this was not to help the homeless, okay? I want the homeless to have help. We made provisions, including the amendment that Councilmember Chavez included on the day of the vote, to help that segment of the population. Councilman Bretafeld just listed all of the organizations that are helping the homeless, and I'm very supportive of those organizations. But really, the ordinance is based upon helping the half a million people in this city that are crying out for an ordinance like this, to clean up the streets, to make their businesses more prosperous, and their neighborhoods more, less fearful, and more healthy for the community as a whole. So again, I know the spin is that this is anti-homeless. It's not. We want to help those folks. Lots of help go in their direction already. We've got great partners that are working to help them on a daily basis. But really, my ordinance was meant to bring help to the 520,000 citizens of the city of Fresno and the 35,000 businesses in the city of Fresno. So just had to make that clear again.
Member Bretafeld, and then Member Baines?
Yeah, and I would just disagree with you on one point, Councilmember Brandow. I think this does help the homeless, and that's the point I was trying to make. The more we get them into services, that's how we help them. And yeah, we obviously are responding to the half a million people who are saying, let's get this problem dealt with in a successful way. And there's been a lot of progress, but this is another tool, as I said, that's going to help. Now, our colleague says that, give the administration and the police, the police department is changing its approach. It's going from the homeless task force, it's going out to the policing districts. But the police and the administration are saying they want this. And they're saying they want this and support this because they know it's going to be an effective tool to help them, help the police, in dealing with this problem. That's why they support it. I don't see this ordinance as just buzzwords. I don't think we need to put a pause on anything. I think there's been a lot of inaction for a long time, and I think over the last several years, from the former administration and what we're doing here, there's been a lot of efforts to try to help homeless and try to clean up the streets and the problems that we're experiencing. This is something that we need to be doing, and there's much more that we need to be doing. I don't think we need to study it. I don't think we need to talk about it. I think we all understand that there's a serious problem here, and I think it's incumbent upon us to take the initiatives to get things accomplished. This ordinance does that. And I would ask and implore people not to give money to panhandlers and to people who are homeless, because when you do, you're keeping them homeless. And that's what the experts say over and over and over. If you want to give money, give it to the charitable organizations working with the homeless. If you give it to the homeless, you're keeping them homeless. That's a fact. It's known by experts. I know it makes you feel good. I did as well. It made me feel good, but it didn't help them. It doesn't help them. It keeps them on the streets. So we know that, and so I would encourage our community to support our agencies trying to help the homeless, give it the money to them, and let's move forward with this, and let's come up with other good ideas to solve this problem, to help our businesses, to keep our community healthy, safe, and clean, to give the police all the tools they need to deal with this problem, and let's be a leader in the country in solving this. And I think this is a step in the right direction.
Certainly, Councilman Bretafeld, you're right, that this ordinance does help the homeless in kind of a tough-love approach to giving them a little bit of a firm push towards acknowledging the services that are available to them. So I acknowledge that. I totally get it. That is, that was not the primary goal, however. It's the secondary goal, and that's why the ordinance was actually pretty well-crafted, so that not, it didn't just tackle one part of the problem, but it also steered the folks that need help in the direction of getting help. So that was the secondary goal of the ordinance. But the primary goal is still really to clear up our streets and to make our city a healthier place to live for the whole community.
Thank you. We'll go now to Member Baines, followed by Member Soria, followed by Member Chavez.
And I just wanted to just say this, particularly in light of my good friend and colleague, Councilmember Soria, who I respect tremendously, and I may be able to count only on one hand the time that we've been on opposite sides of an issue. And I'm not even sure we're on opposite sides, but I wanted to acknowledge everything you said, Councilmember, because you're right. This conversation is much bigger than this. It needs to be had with multiple interests at the table. You're absolutely right, and I don't want that to be lost. And while I totally respect Councilmember Brandow's position that it wasn't specifically, and thank you for clarifying that, Councilmember Brandow, what your intent was, it was much more intent to react, to respond to business and resident interests as opposed to homeless interests. I'm glad to also hear you acknowledge that we're not going to forget about those interests either. So what I think, though, is that there are times, and I don't always agree with this approach, and many of you know me, I'd much rather slow some things down and think things through. I think that there are times when we need to just jump into the water and start a conversation. I think that there are times when we need to just jump into the water and start a conversation. This by no means is going to solve our homeless problem. But you're not, that wasn't your intent either. But what I think it can do is if we do this properly, that it will force a conversation that we need to have. Just your willingness to sit down with our service providers to the homeless community is important. It's important in the framework and context of this piece of policy. So, already, in my opinion, we've got a commitment to move in the direction that we need to go. And so, and while you know, Steve, that I'm not for doing anything without, you know, without a lot of thought to it, this is one of those things, I think, that may hopefully force a conversation that we all need to have. And there is no silver bullet to fixing the homeless problem. If anyone says that, they're wrong and they're lying. You know, no one thing in isolation is going to solve our homeless problem. It is a complex social issue. We in the city don't get very much money at all to combat homelessness. So, we aren't the main drivers of the discussion anyway. But hopefully, we can, you know, if we can, and I'm committed to trying to form the right coalition to deal with as much as we can. And whatever fix that we come up with still won't be perfect. We are still going to have a homeless problem, but hopefully, we can move the needle and we, as a city, can continue to support our very important service providers, who may do some of the hardest work in this community, with trying to serve a very, very complicated population of people. So, I just wanted to acknowledge Councilmember Soraya's perspective, because she's right. It is a bigger conversation. And in a perfect world, yeah, we should have probably all sat around the table with 100 people in a room and tried to figure it out. But this is where we are, and I hope that we can all try to move the discussion forward positively.
And Councilman Baines, you really reminded me of something. So, since last week, when we had the big discussion and the vote, you know, I've been contacted by a lot of people, and I've been, there's a group of people that have said simply this, "Councilman, I disagree with your approach, but thank you for getting a conversation, because we do need to have the conversations." Councilmember Soraya, I actually agree with that aspect as too. So, the only thing that I would say is, this was, you know, I agree that there's a big comprehensive conversation that needs to be had, for sure. And, but, as you guys, as you, my colleagues know, we're getting hammered with situations out in our districts, right? And I just couldn't wait. So, this is a slice, like everybody's been saying, a tool in the toolbox. But I'm not naive enough to believe that this is going to end homelessness or anything like that. It was really not meant to. It's just meant to tackle one aspect of a large problem, right? So, thank you.
Member Chavez.
So, we should start doing this Part One, Part Two, every week, right? Everything comes back. You know, I asked this question last time, and I'm going to address the pink elephant in the room, and this is the question that we haven't really answered. And the way I see things, you know, I agree with a lot of the things that my colleagues said with regards to pairing the enforcement piece with the services piece, and that's what we don't do a very good job at. And that's just being honest. But the question I asked last time, and this is where I'm going to be headed in working with the administration on their comprehensive plan, is, first of all, how much money do we get in our area, in our city, in our region, to address the homelessness issue? There were a couple of numbers that, you know, Preston mentioned, the city has their role. But I really see this as a collective effort, right? We have the city, the county, nonprofits, faith-based organizations. They all do really great work, but they do it in silos. There seems to be a lack of collaboration between the entities. And then the other piece is, there's not enough money. We heard a lot of the folks that came up here and said, there aren't enough services in the City of Fresno. So, if we took the 1,700 people that, right now, we've identified as being homelessness, and they all opted for services, would we really have the capacity to provide for that? Because I think that's the question that needs to be answered. And so, we have this conversation every 10 years, where we come up with a plan, expectations are high, and then we don't live up to those expectations. The gentleman that came up and made the point last time, that said, "You're about to celebrate", I shouldn't use the word "celebrate", but "you're about to observe the 10-year plan of your eliminating homelessness in the City of Fresno." He said, "What are the results of that?" That's the piece that I think as a body, whether it's, you know, a partnership or whatever that looks like, we need to answer. We're spending X amount of dollars, but in reality, how effective are we being? And to be honest with you, I think that's going to put some pressure on organizations that provide those services in our city, right? How long do you track those individuals? Is it the revolving door of homelessness? I don't know the answer to those questions, but I do know that what's been helpful for this, and with Councilmember Brando bringing this up for discussion, is now we are having a broader discussion about homelessness. And we're very good at saying, okay, we need more money. Okay, so if we have more money, where do we spend it? Do we spend it on enforcement? Do we spend it on prevention? Do we spend it on intervention? I mean, that's the question that I'm going to look forward to working with the administration on for the next couple of months. I actually had a couple of ideas, and I want to thank a lot of the folks. Andy, thank you for shooting those ideas. Those are actually really great ideas. Whatever we do, in my eyes, we have to do it in a compassionate manner. These are human beings. They're not, how somebody want to describe them as cattle? I mean, that's not right either, right? So, in my eyes, I think we need to seriously consider looking at a place where we can have folks to go to. I don't know what that looks like. Maybe it's an area where we have showers, we have porta-potties, because I think if we just have the enforcement piece, we're right, we're going to keep reshuffling around the City of Fresno. We've done that before. We've gone down that road. It wasn't effective. So, I'm really looking forward to the next part of this conversation, which is the services piece, the compassionate approach, because the enforcement piece alone is not going to work. And I know that's not what you intended, Member Brando. And that's one of the reasons why I made that amendment, to kind of segue into that conversation. So, I mean, I'm going to support this, but I'm going to be looking for the plan. And I don't even think we need to call it a 10-year plan, because we might be here again in 2027, having the same conversation. Thank you.
And Councilman Chavez, and I, by the way, I really appreciated the amendment that you made. I believe it really, I believe it improved my ordinance. So, thank you for that. You know, you mentioned the 10-year plan, and I've been on a great learning curve about homelessness since we began this conversation, and it's a beginning of a conversation. And the 10-year plan is just about up. But 10 years ago, our point-in-time count was coming out around 5,000 homeless in the City of Fresno. Now, our point-in-time count comes down to 1,700, somewhere in there. And so, I would like to just say that we've seen a great success in getting folks the kind of help in housing temporary and then permanent housing. So, our numbers are dropping. Yes, they've trickled up since last year. But, so, the 10-year plan is almost done, and I'm sure that conversation's happening with our providers. But our providers, and with government included, have really helped to bring down the numbers of homeless in the last 10 years. So, we can't forget that, that we were up around 5,000, and now we're down in the 1,700 range. So, there's been some great improvement, and we could say maybe that was the low-hanging fruit, and now we've got to get very creative to help the next round of folks, and I'm going to be part of that conversation as well.
Okay, thank you. The screen is clear. Typically, typically, the way we do the consent calendar here in the City of Fresno is we, council members can remove items from the consent calendar, and then folks who wish to speak, we let everyone, or everyone speaks at the beginning as a catch-all. So, folks can address any item, 1A, 1Q, 1S. And then, we, as a council, will address the, each item that had been removed by council members. But I do understand we have people here from out of town, and I do have a couple of cards, and I know there are people in the gallery who wish to speak to this particular item. So, in this case, what the council presidency will do is bring people up who have filled out yellow cards on this item, and then we can go ahead and vote. The screen is clear, council. So, the first speaker is J.D. McCubbin. Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, then you'll have three minutes. And we have...
J.D. McCubbin, 617 East Cambridge, Fresno, California. Councilwoman Soraya's district. I'd like to make a couple of particular, I don't want to talk about the homeless, I want to talk about private property. Section 172A21, it distinguishes, it specifies private residential property. A person can let somebody camp there for overnight. Well, that doesn't let, commercial property owners let guests on their property. I don't know why you put that additional qualification of residential. But more to the point, I don't think one night's enough, because people of friends and family come on three-day weekends. There are people that park their RVs in driveways and out in front and stay two weeks on vacation. So, I don't think it was your intent to have property owners be disallowed to have guests on their, in their home, but staying on RVs, but this effectively criminalizes that behavior. My down-the-street neighbor's got his son-in-law, brings the grandkids, and they come for three-day weekends. They can't do that anymore under this ordinance. So, I don't know why you distinguish between residential and commercial, but you do. And then, in the paragraph that is Section 101705, just above that, it says, "The establishment of a camp." Well, that would outlaw, that gets to the property owners. So, if property owners let people stay in their driveway and camp in their RV because their relatives are guests for more than one night, they're committing a misdemeanor under here. This also criminalizes the eco-village, because that's a camp within the definition of the property. And RVs are camping paraphernalia, actually, vehicles are camping paraphernalia, and RVs are vehicles. So, you're really burdening people's private use of the property. I don't think you intend that, but that's what it does. A friend of mine had his son come over, and they camped out in the backyard for two nights. Well, that gave, because that was a misdemeanor under this statute, that gave the ex-wife an opportunity to hassle them, if this were in effect, as he's contributing to the minor. No court will hear it, but you don't want to get bogged down in that. This criminalizes behavior that just normal people are doing every day in the City of Fresno. You don't really intend to do that, do you? I don't think you do, but that's what the statute says. You got to clean it up. And then, I'll just tell you this, not for my benefit, but I helped some guy, I wasn't using my backyard because I was living somewhere else. I let some guy who was squatting in a condemned building live there. I knew him. He'd fallen on hard times. And in the three months that he was there, we got him cleaned up, we got him on social services, we got him in the hospital. A nurse helped him get the medical thing. Now, he's got, had two defibrillators, and he's going to get a replacement heart. And the start was stabilizing his life. I think your answer is right. You need campgrounds for people of limited time. But I'm concerned how this burdens property owners. Please, don't pass it now, until it's approved.
Thank you for your comments. Member Capriolio.
Thank you. That problem doesn't exist due to my oversized vehicle ordinance that we passed just recently. So, it's very precise and specific on what can and cannot be done in neighborhoods. There's allowances for seven days parking in front of the home with the proper procedure that's outlined in California Vehicle Code, Section 22507. And then, with our local ordinance, 14-2701 et sec. So, if you read that, you'll find that we are very generous with those opportunities to have your family and friends stay with you and share the experience in the family setting. Family setting, thank you.
Our next speaker is Abrey Connor from ACLU. Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Abrey Connor, and I'm a staff attorney with the ACLU of Northern California, based here in Fresno. So, last week, we came here to this council and addressed some of our concerns with this proposed ordinance. We also followed up this week with a letter to each of you all, outlining our legal concerns with this ordinance. As you all can probably read from your letter, the United States Supreme Court has explained that it is unconstitutional to criminalize status like homelessness. This was put, this was a Supreme Court case from back in the 1960s. Also, in the Ninth Circuit here, in, the Ninth Circuit is where California is based, Jones v. City of Los Angeles held that unless a city has sufficient housing for all of its residents, it may not prohibit homeless persons from sleeping on public property. Now, even though this decision was vacated due to settlement, there have been other district courts, federal district courts here in California, here in the Ninth Circuit, that have agreed with this reasoning and stated that, indeed, they felt that it's still a constitutional violation under the Eighth Amendment in order, when you put in place these camping ordinances. Additionally, there have been other courts that have held that city camping ordinances can violate other fundamental constitutional rights, such as the right to travel. And to the point that there are services that are in place, as you all likely know, in Kincaid, around the same time that the city was looking at an additional camping ordinance several years ago, Judge Wagner actually explained that the shelter available for homeless persons in this city is substantially less than what's needed for that shelter. The existing overnight facility beds for individuals and families that are seeking shelter overflow daily, that there was a significant shortage available for overnight homeless shelters. And that was an issue that was on a daily basis in Fresno. We have not yet heard this council address how those services are different than what is available now. So, right now, the city is potentially going to violate the Eighth Amendment, potentially the Fourteenth Amendment, and we have asked the city to hold back and not push forward with this camping ordinance. Right now, we know that the city cannot answer those questions. The city has not answered those questions. So, if the city decides to move forward and adopt this proposed ordinance, that still criminalizes people for being homeless, they are indeed, you all are going to indeed criminalize the status and potentially the conduct of homelessness. We ask you all to hold back and not do that.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Tina Yor. Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes as well.
Good morning. My name is Tina Yor. I live at 1249 P Street. I am a citizen of Fresno City, and I am a City of Fresno employee. I have lived in downtown Fresno for seven years, out of the 15 years that I've lived in Fresno. I've seen a lot of camping of homeless in alleyways, in businesses, which is not a very good sight when you live in the area. And there's a lot of it that goes on in this area. I've seen people stand out in front of the stores and use the restroom, both types. I've seen them do a lot of things in the area that was not good. I've also been homeless myself. I've used the services at Pavarillo House. I've lived, I've spent the night at Naomi House. So, I know that there are places that you can go if you want to, and there are services that can be used. I think that if you don't pass this amendment, you're enabling them not to get services. And so, I'm asking you, please, to approve this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Okay, and that is it for the yellow cards. Is there anyone else who wishes to address this agenda item? Please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes as well.
Andy Hansen Smith, 3335 East Kirkoff Avenue. I was at the Board of Supervisors meeting yesterday, and they spoke about this ordinance, and they're very worried the homeless are going to start coming to the county islands or outside the city limits, so they are very worried about this. I think they're going to have, come to their board October 17th to discuss this, but they did say that Councilmember Brando had spoke with some of the county representatives, but just that they are worried about this as well. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the council on this agenda item? Please step forward. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment for this item. The screen is clear. The screen is clear. Let's go ahead and vote electronically. Please cast your votes, council. Oh, I have to vote. Okay, item carries six-one. Thank you, council. That does it for contested consent calendar. And now, we move to our 10 o'clock. Oh, we cannot. Let's go ahead and do general administration. Thanks, Oliver. What did I do without you? Item 3A, this is actions pertaining to the purchase of emission offsets and Department of Public Utilities.
Yes, thank you, council president, city council. This agenda item is, has two components. First is a resolution to appropriate $665,900 to purchase emission offsets. And the second action is to approve the actual purchase of the offsets at the Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility. This is the second block of offsets we have come to purchase in front of the council. First block was to operate one of our flares at the wastewater plant, and then this second block is so we can run both flares, as well as a couple of other units at the wastewater plant. And with that, we're available for any questions.
Okay, well, let's go out to the public. We have a motion to approve from Member Brettafeld. I'll go ahead and second that. Let's go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? Please come forward. All right, seeing none, we'll return to Council Dais. The screen is clear. We have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition to this item? Seeing none, the item carries unanimously. Thank you, staff. We now can do, all right, that ends that. Can we do, okay, we have the, wow, you folks are really something else up here. Okay, is there, since we have 10 minutes before our next timed item, we can go ahead at the suggestion of my colleagues, do unscheduled communication. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the council on any item that's not contained on today's agenda for unscheduled communication? All right, seeing none, we'll close unscheduled communication. Let's go ahead and take a break. We'll be back at 10 o'clock for the 10 o'clock item. The closed session is one that is going to, I believe, take a little bit, so that's why we're not going to go into closed session right now. Thank you, council. The 10 o'clock number one hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinance. This is the Public Works Department.
Morning, council president, members of the council. I'm Andrew Benelli, Public Works Department, with a public hearing today for Community Facilities District. We've received a request from a landowner, Granville Homes, to amend the Community Facilities District for tract map 5717. They're adding some additional features for maintenance and changing the rate and method of apportionment of the tax. If approved, the tax rate will be set at $9,998 per year. And I know we've received several ballots, enough to support passing. We did not receive ballots from all of the landowners. I believe, Avon, I think, seven landowners, we received five ballots, all in support.
And I do believe the clerk has those numbers.
Yes. We normally receive all of the ballots for CFD election, but in this case, we received five out of seven. But the five ballots we received comprised more than the required vote to pass the special tax for the CFD.
And there were no, no votes?
No votes.
Just some ballots that weren't returned. That concludes my report.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? Please come forward. Please give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, Council President Olivier and council members. I'm Claudia Casares with Granville Homes, just here in support of the project. I really appreciate all of the work that Public Works staff has done on this project, and we hope that you vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Return to the Council Dais.
Motion to approve. That's in District Four.
We have a motion and a second by Member Baines. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to this item? Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you, staff. Next item is also hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinance, Public Works.
Morning again. This is, this property or this CFD annexation is adjacent to the one that you just approved. It's kind of the other half of the project. The reason that we're dividing these is because this half is residential, the other half is commercial. So, it's, this is in CFD 11, the other was in CFD 9. This is also a request from Granville Homes. We recommend approval. I believe we've received all of the ballots on this one, and let me see if I can find the tax rate here. Now, I don't see it, but this is a, these are private streets in a gated community, so there's not a lot in this part of the CFD. We recommend approval.
Thank you. We'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this agenda item? It sounds like deja vu.
Claudia Casares, again, with Granville Homes. Again, I appreciate it. I do want to add that Public Works staff and Lilly has bent over backwards to help me learn the process, and I really appreciate her time spent teaching me about the process and the item before you today, and we recommend approval as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to council on this item? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Return to council. The screen is clear.
We have a fantastic project in District Four, so we'll move to approve.
A motion by Member Capriolio, a second by Member Baines. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, the item carries unanimously. Move now to the 1010 item. I have a number of yellow cards for this item. This is a hearing to consider plan amendment application, number A17007, and this is also Development and Resource Management Department.
Yes, good morning, Council President Olivier, members of the council. I'm Sophia Pagalatis with the Development and Resource Management Department, and normally I am before you talking about long-range plans, such as housing elements or parks master plans. But today, I bring before you a specific project set of applications that's related to a very key site in the Southwest Fresno specific plan. So, I'm going to give you a little bit of background on how the site fits into that planning process, and here we go. So, little bit of update on the Southwest Fresno specific plan. It was last before you in December for initiation and is scheduled to be adopted this October. It has gone through extensive community outreach, including six community workshops, 14 steering committee meetings, three community conversations, and 10 topic group meetings. And there has been a significant amount of discussion on this particular site and the proposal that I bring before you today. As you know, the Southwest Pacific Plan area interlocks with the Downtown Neighborhoods Community Plan and is shown on the map that you see. And the site that I'm going to talk about today is the only site in the Southwest Pacific Plan area that is not yet annexed. Therefore, we are bringing it before you today, ahead of the plan, in order to ensure that that piece of property does have time to get annexed. So, looking at the land use concepts in the Southwest specific plan, you see that the new plan was built around the idea of corridors, complete neighborhoods, and most significantly magnet cores. And there were two magnet cores that you see highlighted on your slide that were identified as part of an economic study for the plan that would be key activity centers, that would support the best locations to support more intensive economic activity. And the site that we're going to be talking about today is the southernmost one bounded by Church, Martin Luther King, Jensen, and Knight Avenue. Here's a close-up of the site, and I'm showing you a map that's taken directly from the pending Southwest Fresno specific plan. So, it includes a public facility and a proposed community college, land use and zoning along Church Avenue on the north. It includes a park on the east, Nine Acre Park, residential in the center, and then a regional commercial center along the southern portion on Jensen Avenue. So, again, this is directly from the pending Southwest specific plan. And to get into a little bit more detail about the specific project, it pertains to 15 acres of property, again bounded by Church on the north, Jensen on the south, Martin Luther King on the east, and Knight Avenue on the west. Here is an aerial photo that shows the site, and you'll note that it's directly to the west of Gaston Middle School. It's south of Hinton Community Center and has residential uses in all directions as well. So, the applications that we bring before you today include a plan amendment, and that's going from medium-density residential, urban neighborhood, office, community, commercial, and community park to more medium-density residential, community, commercial, adding regional, commercial, public facility for a proposed community college. And that is all much easier to see on the map I will show you. The graphic on the left shows what our general plan is showing today, and the graphic on the right shows the proposed changes. Additionally, we are proposing a pre-zone today that proposes the zoning that would match the proposed general plan land uses, and that is shown on this map here. And finally, included in this package of applications is a vesting tentative parcel map to create the first four parcels of the project and an annexation application that would actually be for, here's the parcel map, here's the annexation, it would be for 122 acres of property because it includes not only the 115-acre site, but also the surrounding streets. This is a conceptual diagram of what the proposed project would look like, again with the public facility use along Church, the residential uses in the park on the interior, and the commercial along the southern portion on Jensen. The project would conform to our active transportation plan, and here's a diagram showing the red, sort of brownish-looking lines are trail connections. The project would be connected on the north from Church Avenue to Hinton Park and over to Edison, and would also be connected along the south on Jensen and have trails internally as well. Did prepare an environmental assessment for this project, a mitigated negative declaration, and the mitigation measures that are included involve indirect source review for air quality, a Phase One environmental site assessment would need to be done, drainage improvements would need to be made, and of course, traffic improvements would be needed in all directions around the site. Public comment. We did notice the, these applications to all property owners within 1,000 feet of the property, per our code. We did it twice, once for Planning Commission and once for this hearing. We've received approximately eight phone calls inquiring, and once we explained the project, the callers were either neutral or in support. At Planning Commission on August 2nd, there were four members of the public who spoke in favor and four members of the public who were in opposition, and the main concern of the opposition was the loss of homes, the use of eminent domain to take people's homes, and concern about eminent domain for roadway construction. We do, we can address those concerns. The Planning Commission recommended approval by a 6-0 vote. So, that brings us to the conclusion, and of course, to recommend these applications, you need to make findings, and those are findings of consistency with the general plan and the development code. Also, the finding that the change is necessary to achieve the proper balance of land uses that is best for the city. We find that the project was routed to all of the necessary agencies and that there are sufficient public services to serve the project. We also find that the project will not negatively impact city finances, and that the annexation of this property supports orderly growth. This property is bounded on three sides by property in the city. So, with that, that brings us to the staff recommendation, which is to adopt the environmental assessment, approve resolutions that would approve the annexation and the plan amendment, adopt an ordinance bill for the pre-zoning, and a resolution approving the tentative parcel map. And I did want to just note two technical corrections. On your agenda, the annexation actually was noted as a bill when that should have been a resolution, and it was included in your packet as a resolution. And number four, the pre-zone application was noted as a resolution, should have been a bill. Just technical error, but properly submitted in your staff report, and the resolution will note that the annexation is 122 acres. So, with that, I am happy to answer any questions. Mr. Sylvester Hall of Blue Ocean Development is the developer, and he is here today. That closes my presentation. Thank you.
At this time, we'll go out to the public and hear from them. We have two, we have two cards for this agenda item. We'll start with Brunette Harris. Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes, followed by Diane Smith.
My name is Brunette Harris, and I want the heat for Southwest Fresno community. And that is not true, what Sophia stood here, and she told a lie. A lot of the community didn't know anything about this specific plan. You have a steering committee that was put together, and they met more than they met with the community. And when you're doing a project according to the federal guidelines, that has to go out to the community before you make any amendments. These are amendments that they're making. Now, back in 2008, your specific plan goes back to 2008 through 13. Back in 2008, on June 4th, it went before the Planning Commission. Medina let the Planning Commission know that the housing element was not in conformance. You had, I guess, Palina, she even stated the Brown Act, that they were going against the Brown Act. They passed it. On June 17th, it went before the city council. The city council passed it. All of this is illegal. You cannot go back to 2008 and get a planning for a housing element that was not in conformance. That's why you're in trouble today with HUD, because you're not in compliance. They're not doing what they're supposed to do, and we object to it. And so far as the college, Carolyn stated, from the city college, that they haven't had a place that they could put the college yet. They have to go before their board before they do anything like that. So, I'm trying to figure out how you're, how you're trying to bring this before the city council, and not only that, how is you're taking this out of the specific plan when it's still in a draft form? I want to know how you're legally doing that. You cannot take something out of the specific plan and bring, excuse me, gentlemen, will you please listen? I know you guys don't care, but three minutes is a lot for us. I mean, you guys can sit here all day long and talk for hours, and we have to listen to you. You don't have three minutes. So, I would appreciate it if you would listen to me.
Thank you. We will. Do you wish to continue? Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Diane Smith. Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Diane Smith. I live at 1540 West Los Sierra Drive. I'm a resident of Southwest Fresno and also a member of Heat for Southwest Fresno Community. My question to those members that are sitting up there and to Mr. Hall. Mr. Hall was on an appointed committee for Southwest Fresno specific plan. None of this about bringing this before the City Council, pulling it out of the specific plan, and even though it may not be in the city as a, but it's in the spirit of infants, and it's been a very big portion of the West Fresno specific plan. I had to run this down today. I had never seen this. So my question is, and I want an answer before I leave, because many times when I ask a question of city staff, they always say they'll get back to me. Today, I want an answer. How can this be pulled out of something that hasn't been approved and brought before the council now and wanting to get it approved? Somebody up there should have an answer as to how this is happening, and if they don't have an answer for me, then I have an answer for you. Since the inspector general has already been here, maybe we need to get the attorney general here also, because some of the stuff that's being done is illegal and is hurting the residents of this city. The plans that are being made don't take in consideration of people that live in these areas. I, for one, am in a position where I'm in one of those places that I'm going to be gone if something doesn't stop. And believe me, the last breath I take, I will be here fighting for my property and the property of my neighbors. So please, explain to me how this has gotten out of the specific plan in, in front of you guys to start the process for annexation.
We'll get you an answer to your question before you leave today.
No, I want an answer now, because whenever I leave the podium, I never get an answer.
I'm telling you, you'll get an answer today.
No, before you vote?
Yes. We'll answer your question specifically.
I'm going to hold you to that, Mr. Oliveri.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to address this agenda item? Please come forward. Okay, seeing no one, we'll, we'll close, public comment, and return to council. We have a number of council members punched up, and you're first. You guys give me so much advice.
Well, it is, it is my district council member. I just wanted to, first, first of all, I wanted to, I, I, I need to say something, and I'm going to say this a couple of times, because you, this body's going to be receiving a number of updates regarding the specific plan and the goings-on around it, but I have got to thank Sophia Pagalatos of the Planning Department. You know, Sophia, you do amazing work for the city, and you have done amazing work on this project and the entire specific plan, and I thank you personally. I, I, this would not happen without your, your efforts, and I tremendously appreciate you. Our community deserves the effort that you're giving them, and so I thank you on behalf of the residents of District 3. And it won't be the last time I say it, but this is one of the first opportunities that I get a chance to say it, and Jennifer, I want you to know that too. She is a star in your department. And then I also want to take a moment and, and, and thank the Blue Ocean Development Group, that's Sylvester Hall and Jim Shahadi there. Listen, guys, thank you so much for collaborating. I think it's, I think the, the importance of this collaboration for the investment in this community, it's important for people to see. Both of you all have very long histories of community involvement and investment in, in Fresno, and for you all to bring your long histories together as family, as families to come together to do this development is very important. So, again, won't be the last time I say it, but thank you, guys, for, for having some trust and faith in this community. And to my colleagues, I won't, I won't be too long, but I, I do want to just take a moment and, and say that development in Southwest Fresno has been a long time coming, and the community hasn't had really good reasons as to why. And the work that we're doing right now is, is going a long way to address the whys. Getting, getting the land use right is important. Doing this Southwest specific plan process is important. Because of that, we were able to attract developers, investors, to invest in this project. So I'm happy that this is kind of the, the first, the first shot across the bow, so to speak, for what is going to be a, a long 10-, 15-year process of reinvestment in Southwest Fresno. Long after I'm gone, you guys are going to be getting projects that, because of the work that Sophia and the staff are doing now, the Planning Department, is going to lay the groundwork for so much more investment. So this won't be the last time this year, but this is the first time, and the first evidence of some really substantial changes. And I'm going to ask either Sylvester or Jim, for one of you all to come up here and, and just share a couple of thoughts with the council, if, if you don't mind, whichever one. Or, or both. Happy to hear from both of you guys.
Now, as part of the ownership group, I really want to thank everybody involved in this project up to date. It is a long road. It's just getting started. And to, you know, the public comments, this is something that we, we definitely want input on. You know, it's an open process, and, you know, we've had great input in our plans from the Southwest Steering Committee, but this is an open process, and we welcome, you know, all comments from everybody, including the council and the public. So we appreciate this first step, and we look forward to, to working very hard on this to make it a reality. So, thank you.
First of all, recognizing Mr. President, the rest of the council, City Manager Stretcher, City Clerk Ms. Spence, and City Attorney Mr. Sloan. I stand before you, day humble. I'm a 60-year-old man that grew up in West Fresno. Won a basketball championship in 1975 at Edison High School, going 81 and 3 over three years. As a 15-year-old sophomore, I made a promise to God that if you give me the resources, the education, the experience, to come back to my community, that I knew that was being abandoned in the 70s, that I'd come back and make a difference. It took me a little while to get to experience the education and the resources to, to come back and start Coast to Coast Petroleum 17 years ago on Elm and Jensen, and now the Family Dollars, the number-one family dollar in Southwest Fresno. I have O'Reilly's Auto Parts scheduled and under contract to come on the corner across the street with Dollar General and Baskin Robbins, and Dunkin' Donuts and Jiffy Lube, providing products and services to my community I know that are available throughout the rest of the, the, the community. And sure, the Southwest plan started three years ago. The general plan started five years ago, but my plan started 45 years ago. I stand before you, in the community, humble and prepared with the resources to transform my neighborhood. I can't thank Sophia Pagalatos and city staff for three years of enduring, relentless, elite-level work that they've done. I've been all around the world looking at planning processes, and, and I'm, I'm astounded by Sophia and, and what she's done for the Southwest specific planning process. I stand before you, acknowledging the concerns of the community. I'm part of that community. I have over 400 family members in that community. My mother lives on Thorn and Myers. My brother's church is on Waterman. Every dime I have in the world is in Southwest Fresno. My family lives on Kearney, Harz, Poppy, Lotus. That's my family. And if, if you go across my extensive family, my extended family in Southwest Fresno, even Ms. Harris lived, has lived in my cousin's home with my cousin. That's how painful this process is. And I extend my arms around her, and I reassure her and every citizen in that community that they won't have any displacement, there won't be any harm done. That's why God put me in the position, because I'm from there, I can protect that. If it was someone else, they may have some issues, but God chose me. And I fully support staff's recommendation to the council. I apologize for my emotions, but my life, my life's works have been in this. And God said today, Sylvester, let the world know about it. So I'm not ashamed for what God is asking me to do for Him. So I thank you.
I wanted the, the council to be introduced to, obviously, the, the investment group, so you all understand how, how important this is to, to our community and how long, how long it's been going on. And I'll briefly touch on some of the public comment. I don't want to belabor it, because most of it's erroneous, so, but just know that the process is legal. The community has been engaged at probably an unprecedented level in my specific planning process. You know, we keep great records of the number of community participants. It's been some of the largest community meetings that Southwest has, has had, and both Diane and Brunette have been there, by the way, so they're very, very aware of the process. So, you know, I'll, I'll ask this question for Talia or Doug. Is there anything illegal that we're doing here today?
Thank you, council member. Everything that is being processed today is a fully legally compliant process. This is a plan amendment that has been to the Planning Commission, and it's fully legally compliant with all processes. I can elaborate if the council would like.
No, we don't need any elaboration. Thank you. Just so that Diane Brunette can hear, it's, it's legal. We've had it vetted by city attorney, so I am, I'm happy to make a motion to approve this process, approve the staff's recommendation.
Okay, thank you. The screen is clear. Luis, I mean, Member Chavez, you're next.
I'll keep my comments brief, because I wanted to thank all the folks that came up and spoken. You know, Southeast is going through their similar process right now, and working with Councilmember Baines, and I wanted to, first of all, publicly acknowledge the, the work. And Councilmember Baines and I have had a conversation about where a lot of times folks don't know the, the amount of work that goes into these big projects. And, and I just wanted to make sure that folks out there know how hard you've worked on this Southwest plan. We talked about the history of Southwest, and a lot of folks will know that, but my family used to live over on Elm and Jensen. Right behind that, that, I think it's a Cruz Tire Shop now. That's where we lived there in the, in the 80s. So I'm very familiar with, with the neighborhood, and I'm very blessed, this will be my second time where I'm in a position to actually work and help Southwest. First one was on the school board when we brought Gaston, and the very first health clinic that's built into the campus, where folks there to use it as, as a park now, and remember the U back in the day, and, and what that looked like, and we're really transforming that area. Now, in a position to bring all these services and amenities and that, and I think that, that is a fulfillment of, of a promise made a long time ago, where this city has systematically left that part of the city behind. But I want to thank Councilmember Baines for your leadership, for your work. You, you're like, you're like James Brown, man, hardest-working man on the dais. But I know the, the, the work that, that, yeah, he works harder than you, Steve, okay? In Southwest. But I, I absolutely am happy to support this, and, and what I'm more looking forward to is the day when we actually break ground and bring new services to the community, because I think this is going to transform Southwest, South Fresno, and we're living in exciting times right now with all the investments going on. And I said this before, that the decisions this body makes will shape what Fresno looks like for the next 20 to 25 years, and happy to support this project, Councilmember Baines.
All right. Well, there's at least some debate over whether he's a hardest-working man. I might be outvoted 6 to 1, but, really, Councilman Baines, I'd love to sit down and talk with you about some of these projects. I'd love to understand them in more detail, okay? But I just want to echo what Councilman Chavez said, you know, your dedication, rolling up on eight years for your community and fighting hard, he fights very hard for that community, and that, and that section of our city, which I even acknowledge has been overlooked many times in the past. So I want to thank you for all your hard work, and, and staff as well, and they've been working hard. And I do appreciate, you know, I did have a concern when the public spoke a little bit, made me nervous for a few minutes, but there's been a lot of outreach. You, you've illustrated that. You said probably unprecedented, right? So, you know, just thanks, just thanks for holding up your community, and it helps all of us, so I appreciate that. I'll be very supportive.
Okay, the screen is clear, and there are no comments, and I am a man of my word, Ms. Smith. Did, do you feel like you received, do you feel like the, the answer you received was adequate? Okay, come forward, please, and we'll try and get, drill down to the bottom of this and get you an answer, and as, as best as I can. Please, ask your question again, and then Talia will have you attempt to answer.
The specific question that I asked, in the West Fresno specific plan, that parcel of land has been one of the major issues that have been discussed. So the specific plan has not come for approval as of yet. So my question was, and I can say this, because at the meetings that I was attending, it was never brought up, that that parcel of land was going to be pulled out and brought before the City Council for approval for annexation prior to the other issues being taken care of. So my question was, how is it that it's being pulled out of the specific plan, which hasn't gone forward, and it's been a major part of the specific, specific plan all along, and coming before you now for this issue? That's my question.
Is there, is there any city staff who can answer that question specifically? Okay. We, we have an answer. Okay.
I can speak to the procedural requirements, which are that when a specific plan has not been adopted, it can still have parcels selected for separate processing, and this particular section was selected for separate processing so that it can be annexed into the city limits. And it is a legally compliant procedure to use a pending specific plan as the source document for identifying the land use designations and zoning for a plan amendment and a pre-zone. In this case, this project was brought before the Planning Commission through its normal standard plan amendment and pre-zone process. The specific plan can still follow along its own separate track. However, because the plan was not adopted, it is still legally compliant to identify parcels to be processed separately.
Is it legally responsible for the individual that's doing that to inform the specific plan committee that this is being done? Because that was never an issue that was raised at any of the meetings.
Thank you. Okay. The screen is clear, and we have a, a motion and a second. Is there any opposition to this item? Okay, pass this unanimously. Thank you, council. And thank you, everyone who came to, to hear the agenda item. We move now to the 10-15 item. This is a hearing to consider plan amendment application. This is also development and resource management. Yes.
And councilmembers. My name is Jose Valenzuela, and I'm with the Development and Resource Management Department. This morning, you'll be considering the subject plan amendment, rezone, development permit, and related environmental assessment. No changes have been made to staff's report. Staff has prepared a presentation at your request and is available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address council on this item? Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, members of the council. My name is Jeff Casely. I'm the architect and structural engineer for this project. It's Ginder Development. Basically, what we have is we have an infill piece that occurs just off of Fig Garden Loop on Salinas Street. It's a 120-unit project. We have this, it has its own, it's a gated, a gated facility, has its own clubhouse for use of the tenants only. It is, again, 120 units. We have it parked at almost 2:1 right now. We have 238 parking stalls. Every unit has its own garage. It will be fully solar. It will be, it will also have a water reclamation system in it where we take the, the It will be, it will also have a water reclamation system in it, where we take the, the gray water and process it and then use it for all our irrigation of landscaping, et cetera. We had no opposition in the, from the neighbors. In fact, they are very thankful that we're putting this in there, because it's currently a thoroughfare from a couple of adjacent neighborhoods, and they've been having problems with vandalism, et cetera. So they've been very supportive of our project. If anybody has any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address council? Please come forward.
All right. Hey, Jeff, if you could, was there any other public comment?
No, it appears not.
May I?
Please.
All right. So Jeff, you know, you can see that every time we do something, we have concerned citizens, which is totally fine and normal. So in the process of this plan, tell me about the outreach to the neighbors and is there any...
We did our typical mailing, and we set up a meeting at, which school was it, Georgia? It's one, one of the adjacent elementary schools. And we, we ended up having one individual that showed up, but she was speaking for several of the other neighbors that were directly adjacent and, and was actually happy about, and so were the neighbors, because there's been a lot of problems with the thoroughfare use of that empty piece of property going from, well, the adjacent property and across. People are using it and going over the fences, actually getting into the, getting into their pools. There's a private gated community there of higher-end homes, and they're actually supportive of us putting this in, which is not usually the case, as you well know.
Right. Yeah.
And it was, it was, it was odd, but because of the problems they've been having and because of the reputation Ginder has and the type of facilities that they put in, they were wholeheartedly in favor of it.
Well, over the years, you guys have, Ginder Development's done a lot of projects in District 2, and they've, they've all turned out fantastic. So I'm going to be very supportive. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Council President, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second by Member Baines. And the screen is clear. Is there any opposition to this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, the item carries unanimously. Thank you, council. And thank you, staff. Okay, that's it. Okay. We have, okay, we did the 1010 item. We did the 1015 item. Okay. And now for scheduled communication. We have appearances by Kimberly Castro, Melissa Fairless, Bernile Walker, Sharon Williams, and Fred Vanderhoof.
I don't see them.
Okay. And we also had an appearance by Mr. J.D. McCubbin to discuss code enforcement program consequences.
He actually came by to tell us that he wasn't prepared to come today before us.
Okay. Well, in that case, that concludes our agenda today. We now move into closed session. City Attorney?
Yes, for closed session, we have performance evaluation and labor negotiation concerning the city clerk. I would not expect an announcement afterwards.
Thank you. All right, council, we'll see you in closed session.